You have one more house. You said you actually destroy your own.
I've only got 20 seconds.
Good luck.
You could hold still like lifting your glasses and reading something.
Okay. Now 10 seconds.
Do a live countdown.
Call me in order. Stand and have play at least.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call.
Here.
Brunner.
Here.
Farnum.
Here.
Helsley.
Here.
Voight.
Present.
Jennings.
Here.
I would comment.
Yes, uh, you know, it's been, I asked this several times, but still no answer on the note 12 in the audit from a couple of years ago, and I understand you're still working on it, but I appreciate it. You know, if you can't get an auditor to correct it, just simply pass a resolution stating he's al- he's already in a meeting acknowledged that it wasn't entirely correct, that statement. Maybe just pass a resolution stating that for the record, and then, and then don't worry about it, because it, it matters historically that the record is set straight on that money, and it matters in the future, because if, if it keep, if it continues that everybody is under the impression, including him, that he pays the money, you know, he could run for a public office in the county. But if he still owes money, doesn't matter how many years go by, he still owes the money. That would stop him from running for a public office in the county. And that, right now, that's my mission. Either he's gonna pay that hundred thousand dollars or he's never gonna run for office. So, yeah.
Thank you. You're still in the check. Any other public comment? Okay, the purpose of this meeting, we have a vacancy on the county board by the resignation of Dale English, and the Central, Republican Central Committee has recommended to me that we appoint Andy Patrick, and that, that is my recommendation for the board, as a consensus of the board. I'd like to have that in the motion.
I make that motion.
My roll call.
Zuber.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes.
Farnum.
Yes.
Helsley.
Yes.
Voight.
Yes.
Motion carried. Congratulations.
May the force be with you.
Seat here. We have nothing else on the agenda for this special meeting.
I make a motion if we adjourn then.
There are a motion and second adjourn. All those in favor, by the usual sign.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Ben, say that again.
We're going into a regular study session meeting. Call me in order. I would comment.
Well, I thought that was a study session, so I'll just restate everything I said before, thanks.
You'll have to hear it again.
Well, I can say it again.
Any other public comment?
Yes, my name is Robert Vogt, and I'm a Dager County resident. I want to talk about the airport just for a minute. You've heard it time and time again, and before I stood before you and talked about documents and things like that, there were a number of nonbelievers, but I think at this point you can say that I did know what I was talking about, that the grant has a problem, and you're not gonna see the grant in the form that it was originally proposed. Along with this, I would like to add that you have a new airport manager at the Dager County Airport that has a number of problems. Before I make that admission, I would just like for you folks to go back and look at his credentials, and the trends, and the information that you have, and decide if that's a good choice. I don't think it's too late to fix a mistake. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Now we'll go on to committee reports.
Alan. One thing I would say is, and I say it, I'm pretty sure, we have to just check our work session for Wednesday, is just a reminder of that amendment that's gonna be attached to the Regional Office of Education, clearing up of housekeeping type of things where we've really never paid any, any extra maintenance like probably we were supposed to, and so the amendment will take that off of and make it more clear on it is all the county's responsibilities provide for the maintenance of that building. I think in seven years' time, that building goes back to all the counties, so that was the, that was the main thing, and it is on there now.
Yes, it is.
Sure, I saw it, you said the other day, so, oh yeah, there it is. So, that is, that's the main thing I have coming up.
Your recommendation that we pass that?
Yes, I.
Is there anything else?
Along, along those same lines, I believe I attached, somebody was asking for a breakdown of each county's share. I think that's in there.
Yeah, as I say, I gave that out last time, I believe.
Yeah.
So, if it's not there, everybody got a copy of it last time, along with the, all the expenses for the, so you got that last one.
Uh, 911. Troy and Manette are here, but at last Wednesday's meeting, we discussed a little bit about the dispatching and costs involved, and I think two weeks ago in the study session, they presented some information to us, and I, off the top of my head, I think it was a hundred of county's costs, if we entered into this agreement, it would be approximately a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And I know Jeff questioned those costs at last Wednesday's meeting and thought they were inflated, and I told him I would get, gather some information and talk with Manette, and we sat down last week and went over the costs, and I think I passed out some costs they were going to look at. There's two different sheets. The top sheet, which is, has all the costs, but it also includes insurance, and if you look down towards the bottom, after including all those costs and the insurance, the sixty percent is a, these are approximate figures, but a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. And if you're looking off the second sheet, and that does not include the insurance cost, and the cost is a hundred and twenty-two thousand, approximately a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. I know Jeff, I, I think when they figured, the 911 group figured their costs over the last month, they were including health insurance for five employees, and Jeff pointed out at the meeting last Wednesday that there was only two employees getting health insurance, which is not correct, there's three of them that are currently on the.
Are there three now?
Yeah. And I don't know when the third one got on, and she might just, with this new rates and everything, she might just join, I don't know, but there's three of them. But, of course, there is a difference in the health insurance costs, you know, for the dispatchers who are under, are under the union contract, the counties are currently paying like six hundred and fifty dollars a month for their insurance, but then the, all the other employees that are not under the union contract for that same policy, it's like four hundred and sixty dollars, so there is a difference there. But this gives you some idea of what the actual cost for the dispatching is, and it's a little, it's higher than what our current costs on an annual basis, because currently the sheriff is not filling all the, the different shifts with people, so our current costs are a little bit less, and I know I did some figuring on that, and it's approximately, if you consider the health insurance costs, about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. It's what figures I come up with, our current costs. So, you take, and then the 911 is reimbursing the, the county for that second chair on the evening shift, that's not, currently not being filled at all times, and at the current rate, or current amount that we're paying on an annual basis, it amounts to about twenty-five thousand. So, the way I figure, you take the twenty-five thousand off of the two hundred and fifteen thousand that our current costs are, so it currently, it's approximately round figures a hundred and ninety thousand, that the current costs are for dispatching for the sheriff's department at the current time. And then you go look at this, the second sheet, and the proposal is, round about figures, a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Correct me if I'm wrong here. Approximately a hundred and twenty-two thousand, but then we've got to split, in my opinion, the best way to go about it is to split the insurance costs at the sixty-fourty rate, whatever that is.
You mean the reimbursement rate? What the county pays and 911 pays, in other words, county will pay part and 911 will pay part of the.
Of the insurance?
Yeah.
Yes, based on the sixty-fourty split.
That could be an actual.
Right, the actual.
Yeah, there's no, whatever, that way if you've got five, you've got five, if you've got one, you've got one.
These other costs, we know are, you know, they're pretty well set in stone. It could be, actually, these figures are a little on the conservative side, because a lot of these figures, we did not use overtime rates, and, you know, it's hard to tell how much of it's gonna have to be at overtime rates versus, you know, straight time rates, part-time, so the actual cost could go a little higher, but I think probably 911 is saying that maybe if we come up to agreement, that hundred and twenty-two thousand is what they will stick with. You know, our costs for this first year won't be any higher than that.
Right, we would eat the rest if there was.
Right, you know, if there's, if they have to pay extra at overtime, then that's, that comes out of their pocket, so to speak.
Who pays for training, Carl? This is a good time to ask that question. If it's a dispatcher training, the county has to pay for it? If it's 911 training, obviously 911 pays for it? I mean, I'm, I'm confused, leads and all that stuff, would.
Well, I think we wrote, we put that in that.
Yeah, and that first, did you get that first sheet that we had back two weeks ago?
Yeah, and I don't remember what it says.
We said actual, yeah, we said if it's, if it's law enforcement training, the sheriff would, and if it's.
Well, what do you, what do you guys reckon that's gonna be annually?
I, I don't know that there's been any law enforcement training.
So, it's, it's less than five or ten thousand dollars a year? Most of your leads training now, so you know Mr. Helsley happens online? And they can do it online, their certifications are online?
And there's a class this week that we're going to, and it's free, so I don't.
Okay, it's not big.
In the agreement, it says any non-911 or aid training job continue to be the responsibility of the county sheriff.
Mike, the training that's the most expensive is the E and B training that 911 would cover.
Right, okay.
That's very expensive.
Okay. Carl, a couple of things, uh, that I've got a question, I'd like to comment, first, I, based on the figures that I had, which is not even close to what we had, we had the report from, it sounds negative when it said that I was, thought it was inflated, that was based on the information that I had from Don's office that was created last February. Okay. Now, I have a question about the, on the second page.
Okay.
One fifty-eight thousand plus nineteen thousand, twenty dollars, three extra shifts per week. Is that the second chair? Part of the second chair?
Part, one of the shifts of, go ahead.
No, five full-time people don't cover all the shifts, Jeff. They're, with five full-time employees, you have three open shifts a week.
Great.
That have to be covered.
Yeah, if you got, when you figure covering.
Cutting off and.
No, that doesn't, that doesn't count for that, that's.
When, when you have four full-time people, they can cover all the shifts, all the shifts, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, except one shift, okay? And for that second chair, they work five days, and then two, there'd be two more shifts that would have to be covered on the evening time that, that one person can't cover, so there's, actually, there's three open shifts per week, and, you know.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Right.
So, the second chair, how, if that's part of the five, in.
Yes.
Okay, currently, we're not responsible for the second chair. Is that correct?
Correct.
But under the new program, we will be responsible for the second chair?
It's figured into the total cost of dispatching.
Okay, so, that's a savings, then, the twenty-five or twenty-six thousand that we're collecting to the thirty-two thousand a year, we're not gonna be saving anymore, that's wiped out, and we just go back to this. Correct? In other words, we're, we're billing 911 right now for a second chair.
Right, that, right, you wouldn't be doing that.
So, that savings is gone, and we start from ground zero, correct?
But you subtracted it when you figured the total cost.
Yeah, when, when figuring the total cost, I think I see why you're getting at.
Yes, I am, yes. See, I'm saying that.
I'd have to.
We, we need to think about, and this is good, I mean, I'm, I'm glad we have this, I'm not, I'm just, but we need to think about how we're approaching this.
Right. I, I have to think on that and get it in straight in my mind.
Okay.
But, yeah, and then the, on that last line down there, of all the, the employees get forty days off a year, you know, potentially.
Right.
Because they get five personal days, ten vacation days, thirteen holidays, and twelve sick days, and there's no way of knowing how many sick days they're gonna use.
Right.
So, I, we use all those days, 'cause that potentially is what it could be, and, you know, in most departments under county, if someone's sick or they're on vacation, you don't fill, you know, you don't have to call someone in to fill their shift, but obviously, with the dispatching, someone has to be there 24 hours a day. So, that, that is definitely a cost, and then, of course, the uniform allowance, but that's the figure that we come up with, so, you know, if, if that's the figure we can use, there looks to me like, what I see that figure was, a hundred and ninety thousand is our actual cost to the county, and if we can do it for a hundred and twenty-two, there's a difference of a little under seventy thousand, but we also have to consider the insurance costs, whatever that might be, sixty percent of that, so actually, our savings at our current rates, I think, I think we're paying about eighteen, twenty thousand dollars for insurance.
Now, we're currently paying, you say, a ninety, a hundred and ninety thousand a year, right? Is that what you're saying?
That'd be our actual cost after we get the reimburse.
Minus, minus twenty-two? Minus the twenty-five thousand that we're getting?
No, that, I've already took the twenty-five off.
Okay.
It's two hundred and fifteen, then you take the twenty-five off that they're reimbursing us, which is down to a hundred and ninety thousand, and then we've got to, then if you take the hundred and twenty-two thousand that they're proposing currently, that, that's a figure we're gonna use, a hundred and twenty-two thousand, so that's a hundred, a sixty-eight thousand dollar savings, but then we also have to add in health insurance costs, and at the six, six fifty, fifteen thousand, the twenty-one thousand dollars we're currently paying, so you take that off the seventy, or sixty-eight thousand in savings.
So, you're saying all five of those take the full six hundred and sixty, whatever, all five of those employees right now?
No, only three of them currently, that the county's paying for currently.
Forty-seven thousand.
Right. Forty-seven thousand dollars savings, potential savings.
And then you have to add back on sixty percent of what they're actually gonna take. You're gonna have to have insurance then when they come over from the county, too, or not. If I'm that, if I'm those three employees.
The twenty-one thousand, you take sixty percent of that.
I'd go with that.
So, that's twelve thousand, a little over twelve thousand, but, so it's a fifty-six thousand dollar savings to the county.
And we're do, and we're doing that percentage because the 911's paying the percentage of that insurance.
Right.
What you just said.
Correct. So, we split, we use the sixty-fourty because they feel like that's the percent of the work that they're doing for the total dispatching cost, and we use the sixty-fourty for the labor costs, and then there's also the health insurance split in at sixty-fourty. That, that gives you some ideas on the costs involved, the savings, potential savings to the county. That's one aspect of it. There's another aspect, you know, for just what we want done, you know, I think the general feel, you know, you know, we gave them the, the direction.
Sure. Come up with their proposal.
Come up with a proposal, that's something to consider. You know, I expressed, I think most of you know that I've had some reservations, I know the sheriff has had some reservations, you know, about taking over those responsibilities, but, and I made, made it out in the last meeting, that if I was sheriff, I would have, I have some reservations about it, but in light of all the complaints, and where I, I see, this is my personal opinion, where I see the, the level of service continuing to deteriorate, that this is something that has to be done. From a public, I think the public safety is, the service we're providing for public safety is deteriorating, and bad things are gonna happen, and I, quite honestly, give you examples, how it already has, and I think part of, the problem is lack of training, lack of supervision and leadership, and I think that if 911 took it over, some of that could be rectified.
Comments?
Did, did you have a meeting last week with the sheriff?
Yes.
About this? Do you, do you think it's relevant to comment about that meeting at this time?
Yeah, he, he was all in favor of 911 taking it over. He said, let him get started. He said, they might, it's gonna be eventually worked out, let him get started, that was what he wanted to see happen. I can't remember if he said anything else, you know, there's other people, most of you were there. Is there any other comments that you knew about it?
We were all there, except one.
Was there anything else said?
No, that was basically.
I mean.
Nobody invited me.
It's not nice to go to that.
You get it on purpose. I'm sure he had this.
If you don't mind, did I make a comment? Sure. We have a meeting scheduled for this afternoon for 911. We, we have talked to the state's attorney, and we are considering, or still looking into some of those duties and job responsibilities by opinion of the state's attorney, you know, that I think Carl, you know, like you said, Carl's expressed his concerns, but there are some concerns, but I sat here and listened, and so was several other people, but, and Carl's made the biggest statement was, it's not just about the savings to the county, it's about the public service, the, the safety, the public safety. The service is what we're, as 911, the most concerned about. But currently, and Mr. Voight, I appreciate your explanation of, you know, the, the newspaper article says, I don't think the county should fund experimentation. This isn't an experiment, this is what has to happen. This, this is put together with a lot of facts, a lot of time, a lot of hard work, and a lot of detail, but this is all about public safety, more than anything. But currently, regardless of the savings, currently, as you, you've expressed, we're putting in twenty-five thousand dollars, 911 share a year to the county, whereas if we go with this route, we'll be looking at our share being eighty-one thousand. So, that's the biggest thing, is we're influxing our, our responsibility from 911, our financial responsibility, is putting in some funds into the county to offset those costs, and that's the main thing that we're looking at, too, is that, that, that type of savings. But the public safety is, is the main thing. And Carl said it the best, we feel the same way, and I could go into details also, since the last time we met, there's been three calls that I know of, that's, that could possibly lead to some, there's some risk management involved here, and saving the county some tort funds. And this, you know, this isn't the time or place to go into detail, but we do have a meeting, and I would invite any of you to come to the meeting, because I think we can discuss these figures a little bit more detail, and some of these other things that we're gonna work out through the state's attorney, and hopefully the sheriff will, will be part of the attendance, I doubt it, but hopefully he will, and we can get moving on this, but I appreciate all your guys' time.
Can we, can we run over money one more time?
Sure.
Okay, so, right now, this currently costs, out of the sheriff's budget, two hundred and fifteen thousand roughly? Jeff, is that?
I don't agree with that at this point.
Well, it's not all out of his budget, no. Okay. But this is what it's costing for 911 services? What did dispatch services?
I don't make it at about a hundred and ninety thousand.
Well, I'm saying, is that before the twenty-five?
Hundred and eighty-five, actually.
Is that before the twenty-five out or not? Your estimate is closer to a hundred and eighty-five on that part, the total current services.
I mean, we've gotta sit down, but I've just got this, I mean.
Right, right. Yeah, that's okay, I'm just, that's what I wanted to say. Go ahead.
I, no, go ahead.
But then, but then we have the twenty-five thousand that we get reimbursed. That's. Roughly?
At the current.
Roughly?
Yeah, we budget thirty-two, but we're probably only.
We're getting about six thousand a quarter.
Yeah, so, that's still the discrepancy there, the hundred and eighty-five, hundred and ninety, two hundred and fifteen, whatever. Okay, so then, then we said we're gonna add the amount that we're saving on what they're paying, or what we're paying on insurance for those three employees? Is that what you said? Let me, three employees, 'cause they're only paying, was it twenty or forty dollars? Instead of, and so that was about six hundred and forty.
Currently, the county for those three employees is costing us over twenty thousand dollars.
Yes. Twenty-three, okay, yeah, something like that, okay, so, we would add that figure to whatever our savings cost is, and then we're also gonna have to take back some, because we're still gonna actually be paying sixty percent of those three.
Excuse me a second.
Yep.
How are we coming up with twenty-three thousand for three employees' insurance?
Well, you use six hundred and seven, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Our base fee is four hundred and seven.
No, it's not.
I mean, for them, they only pay twenty or forty.
Oh, for them, for them, okay.
For those three employees.
That's what I, that's what I wanted to make sure. Six forty is what I roughly, you think it's more than that?
It's six fifty, 'cause I asked Billy Ann again this morning.
Okay, and I wish they could.
It's six seventy, and they're paying twenty dollars.
Right, right.
So, it's six fifty for two of them, and it's five hundred and. So, it's six fifty for two of them and it's five hundred and eighteen dollars for one of them.
So that's twenty-three for.
Is it, I mean, I roughed it at twenty-three, just based on average. Okay, so then we add that to that, then we come back and we, we have to take some of that off, correct? Because we're still gonna, we're gonna take their three policies and we're gonna pay sixty percent then of their three policies at our normal rates, at what I call our normal rates. They're still gonna have insurance.
Yeah, but we don't know at what rate we're gonna have that.
It's gonna be roughly, four, probably, what, four hundred? Something like that, what was it gonna cost us?
Of course, five, they'll take insurance too.
Right, I mean, I, I mean, what, what I'm saying is that we're gonna have to pay some of that back. Sixty percent of whatever those five decide to take, the county's still gonna pay sixty percent of that, even if it's like everybody else in the county takes that. And I'm not making any sense, at least those three have taken insurance in the past.
Right.
So let's say those three take the normal plan that they're taking right now. Where they're having to pay that amount. They're, that's gonna be about four hun- you know, we're gonna pay, it's gonna be about four hundred bucks on then.
We don't know what the rates are gonna be and we don't know whether, once, if they hire the, all the people and all five of those employees take insurance, then we're gonna have to pay, it's gonna cost us more.
More, right, and I just roughed it off, like. Then we'll probably, right around at eighty-six hundred, eighty-seven hundred probably. So, but what I'm saying, whatever that figure is, then we have to take that part back off of our savings. Does that make any sense? Jeff, does that make any sense, or does that make any sense to you? I mean, we're, we're taking off the amount that we have to pay, but we're also gonna have to pay, like we do for every other county employee, we're paying sixty percent of whatever that figure is. So even if it's eight thousand, so that's, that's what I was trying to figure out, so is that then the, the final amount? Am I making any sense?
Yeah, yes.
Is that, is that the, the way you would bring the dollars? I mean, whether it's the hundred and eighty-five, which Jeff thinks it may be, or the two-hundred-and-fifteen, which you guys think it may be, we're gonna take, we're gonna have that cost subtracted from the hundred and twenty-two thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then we're gonna get a figure, whatever that figure is.
Well.
No?
I'm sorry, but if we enter up in agreement, I think the hundred and twenty-two thousand would stay consistent and fair, but then we'd have that addition on that contract or the agreement that would say, and sixty percent of the actual insurance cost.
Whatever it is, yeah, but what I'm saying is like right now, Carl's pretty sure, thinks that it is, and I think roughly twenty-three thousand, let's, so let's, let's add that to our savings. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then what we need to do is take off whatever the sixty percent of whatever insurance those five take.
Yes, sir.
And so, then that's gonna come up with a, what you believe to be the actual savings?
Yes, sir.
And we'll drill down those numbers a little bit more, but just so Jeff knows and, and y'all know that a couple of years ago, during the budget process, a lot of that overtime for dispatchers, jailers and deputies all went into one bucket and so it's hard for us to figure that all out without getting very detailed of the exact overtime that the dispatchers are paying. So that's one of the things that is, is kind of the savings fluctuation. But we can drill that down just by the actual payment of overtime to the dispatchers. However, if we go into the, this agreement, you know, we're willing to accept those costs of that overtime because as with any organization, overtime is, is a necessary evil. However, with proper management and proper selection and sourcing of employees and scheduling, we'll probably be able to avoid a lot of that overtime cost. And if you look on the bottom of that sheet, obviously that time and a half at twenty-two eighty-six is offset, I mean, that's a, a huge influx in cost versus the eleven twenty-five or the fifteen twenty-four. But currently, with the situation we have now, the hands are tied of the current administration of how to manage that overtime cost. Whereas we'd have a little bit more flexibility with this also, which again increases the service and the public safety as well as cost savings.
You talking contract versus no contract?
Yes, sir.
Well, while you're on that subject, what, how many part-timers do you reckon you'll have available? You have to got a figure in mind, just.
Well, rough figure would be three right off the top of our head, just to cover this, some of those extra shifts.
So you cover the extra shifts at eleven versus?
We would hope to.
Yeah, that's what our goal would be, Miss.
Well, that'd be an additional savings.
Exactly. And that's, that's some of the flexibility that we would have, the current administration does not have. Which is kind of why I think it's, it's crazy not to be looking into this like we currently are. I mean, his hands, Mr. Motley's hands are tied too, and any sheriff's hands would be tied under the current situation. And then also, like I said, the, the public safety, the services, that's the main thing too.
Well, one last question, is that what they're making now?
Yes, sir. There would be no change in that, we would see no change in that and only if anything, you know, with the current thing is depending upon experience and again, the level of service and annual, is something that we would look at for, for that also. But it would be on a per-person basis and not per-contract basis.
Like you, I need to look at, one way I figure this and I'm within a couple of grand of you and the other way I figure it, I'm off, so we need to look at it.
I would invite you to come to the meeting so we could talk about where we're getting these numbers from, Jeff, because I think that's the the whole thing is maybe there's a disconnect, but, but you are the, the, the financial guy for the board and, and I would understand your concerns and I really do. However, we've put a lot of due diligence into this to the best of our abilities where we have a group of people that agree on where these numbers are coming from. So, you know, I would invite you to come, Jeff, and, and we could figure out exactly where we're getting this, but like I said, there's challenges with the way the current budget is set up under the sheriff. With overtime and, and vacation and sick days, that all rolls into one bucket. And we have to pick out from the dispatchers of what those actual costs are.
And I, and you have narrowed the, the gap a lot by, by this. I mean, I can see a lot better than I could those first figures we had, so I thank you.
And I think, you know, if this is something that we're still interested in, I think one thing that we need to get started is to notify the union that we're considering this because per the contract, before we do this, before we can dissolve the union through subcontracting, we have to give them thirty days notification. So I think, as soon as possible, we need to notify them, let them know what we're considering, have discussion with them and see what their thoughts are. Because before we can do, before this agreement can be worked out, we have to resolve that situation. And I don't know whether we need to, I don't know how we need to go about that, whether we, obviously we can't approve it here, we can't approve. I think we, that's just something, we can go ahead and just notify them, we don't have to have a vote on it.
Maybe somebody ought to ask the state's attorney about that, maybe.
I think the finance committee needs to get together and agree on the figures.
Yeah, we need to look at it.
Finance committee is you and, and, yeah?
And Alan.
And Alan, okay. You guys get together and, and come up in agreement on this. And then, also the nine-one-one board member needs to be on, be there, which since he's on the committee, that'll work out alright. And then you can make a recommendation for the board for this.
And as Troy said, there's a meeting at four-thirty today, all of you are welcome to come to hear the conversation.
Where at, guys?
Courthouse.
Lower courtroom.
Any other questions on it that currently, present time? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for giving us all this information.
Do you have anything else, Carl?
There wasn't anything else to come up at that meeting concerning the sheriff, was there?
Only budget, or you were gonna look at the budget and see if you had any, so we could get, get the budget to bed as soon as we can.
We need, our committee needs to do that. Are we gonna meet in the near future?
Yeah, we can, no matter, we can be later on this week since the weather's ready.
Yeah, we'll schedule that meeting and we look at these figures on nine-one-one and talk about the sheriff's budget.
That's fine.
Are you talking, are you talking about what the nine, does this nine-one-one decision, you're basing that budget, some of those budget figures on, if this, if you go along with this nine-one-one thing, taking that dispatcher money out of that line item?
We have not done anything in regards to that yet in the budget.
Right, but, you know, if, if we feel like we're gonna get this worked out, then the sheriff's budget would have to be adjusted, but you know, there is not only a line item for dispatch costs, but there's also overtime, a line item for overtime, which includes some of the stuff for dispatching, part-time, clothing allowance, so you know, there's different things.
Right.
That have to be adjusted.
But this, this probably isn't gonna get solved before the budget time, is it? You're not, we're not gonna make a decision on it before.
It's gonna be tough, isn't it, Carl?
Very well could be.
We may have to put some, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I, I, I don't know how this works, the reason I'm asking, I mean, you can't put a caveat on it that says, oh, by the way, if we change our mind and if we do vote for this and you're out X amount of dollars.
Well, we can do, and we haven't talked about it because we didn't, it was premature. It's like last year, when we put in the current year's budget, we put in a line item in administrative to handle it. And what we may be able to do is do that again and take some money out of the sheriff's budget and put it into a, think about this, Carl and Alan, and put it into the administrative line item that we more closely control. And then we can do with it how we wanna do it. I mean, that's an option.
They're not, they're not wanting this to start, according to their agreement.
I think they feel like the sooner the better.
Sure.
At this point, because of the way things are headed. But, but in reality, it's gonna take some time to get it all done, you gotta get, once we agreed that we wanna go and get a figure, then the state's attorney's gonna have to come up with a contract, so it's gonna take time.
The union thing, that's a month, I mean, you know, that, there's a lot of.
Yeah, it's, in all reality, it'd probably be towards the end of the year versus January. Anything else?
I don't have any more.
Martin? Not this time.
Pam?
Dropped the estimate off to Randy on the broken glass. And I think I told him we decided to put the glass back in, so I gave him a key, so he'll be good on when he can.
And, and he came out that day?
Oh, did?
I was still out there visiting with somebody, he came out.
I think they, I heard they were working on the roof at the health department, we'll find out. Next week, I have a meeting. I did stop the animal shelter, talked to Andrew, everything's running fine out there, no problems there, so.
One of the cameras is working. One of the cameras is working.
Camera was working, one was up inside.
Today.
She was feeling bad, so I told her to take the afternoon off, I guess I have that authority, she has sick time.
I guess you do now.
If she has sick time.
The claim was somebody went out one time and couldn't get in, so I said, post it on the door if you're sick and go.
No one, no one gives you authority, you have to take it.
I took it.
Don't we still have somebody else helping them?
Yes, it does, I see it out there. In fact, we had two volunteers and then we had four people there.
Congratulations again, have you got your reports done?
We put him in charge of the waste management.
Don't do it, Andy, don't do it. It's a dirty job.
You was done or not, or you got more?
I'm done.
Okay.
Have a question, you, you referring to Randy Lantau?
Yes.
That's what I thought, okay.
We have a dog meeting today, just case they want to shut up for a while.
Yeah, we do have a dog meeting.
We're not trying to get you there in time.
Okay, on Farm Bureau, the Farm Bureau, in order to produce the plat book, has asked the county to waive or adjust the fees that they need in order to update and produce the book. So, we need to come up with a way to, well, first of all, normally they want eleven thousand tracts, and the way we produce it, it's twenty-five cents per, per tract and that would be roughly, what, twenty-eight hundred dollars? Twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred dollars. However, the information on there is extensive, we don't have anything for a lesser amount. Basically, what they need for their purposes is name, address, and acreage, which we can produce in a matter of minutes on the computer and send them a file and do it, okay? So, I think we need to decide, or at least figure out a consensus on how we wanna handle that. They're good for the, the county, they're, they're offering to pay us something, so we're not giving it away. Maybe two, three cents per unit. They'll make sure that we have a brand-new map and additional units of the book for the various departments, like Augie asked for it, assessors have asked for it, the treasurer's office.
How about a full-page color ad with our pictures on it?
No.
No?
Have, have they paid like that twenty-seven fifty in the past, is that what they paid?
No. But, I mean, we need to, we need to come up, we gotta realize that if we do for one, then maybe somebody else.
Yeah, 'cause there's other plat books.
Sure.
You know, Rockford, you know, there's just other plat books and things and I don't, soon they paid full price.
Right, what does it actually cost itself?
That's what. Pretty minimal now.
Pretty minimal now, 'cause it's all computer.
Just do it.
Well, I, I can't just do it, I'm like Dan, who can give people who have.
I cannot just do that.
I'm not suggesting that, that you just do it, I'm just saying that.
Could Ross give us an idea, you think, or a breakdown of figuring out what our total costs were with that, that process?
Ten minutes of his time.
Yeah, so I mean.
So we're talking.
Would that be a legitimate way to come up with it? In the same time.
Our costs are a little more than that.
Yeah, we got more than.
I mean, we did have to fly over to get them.
Right, right. I, I was thinking that two to three cents would get us around the two, three hundred dollar range, which is acceptable to them. That's, okay.
But if another company comes in, we're gonna offer, do they make two or three cents?
If they want the same kinda information.
Right.
I mean.
Because they're getting the last information.
Yeah, normally, yeah, normally it's set up, we have to actually reduce the amount of information, information we're sending to them, okay?
I think all of our, all of our departments and stuff, I think we're all in the public service business. And I don't, I mean, whatever we have, I think they just need to pay for whatever our service is, but at the same time, they've already paid for that too, and we have too, I mean, I don't, I don't like the idea of if somebody goes into Augie's office and say, hey, can I get this, this, and this, and he's, oh, you have to go through this, go through this. If Augie's able to do it or he's got somebody to do it, I think that's a part of what we should offer, is public service.
We already tell them what they have to pay in Augie's office.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, whatever it is, but if it's not something that's listed on there, you know, why, why you make?
Well, this is an exception.
Yeah, but I'm like Carl, would that be, I mean, that's, would that take care of us? If somebody came in and asked for the same amount, then we charge them whatever we're charging them. I mean, if they're wanting eleven thousand tracts, they all, they want this, this, and this. Whatever we come up with, I think that would be the same for everybody.
I just wanna give a sample. I'm thinking that we oughta net a few cents off of this, which I think is reasonable. And then, if another company comes in and wants something more, then we need to revisit, I mean, it would take a short thing for us to say, well, that's gonna cost more, so therefore we oughta do more. Or if some company comes in and says, we need less information, as long as it doesn't take Ross two days to do it, we, we adjust it, but why don't we just pick a figure, let's say two-hundred-and-fifty bucks? How's that sound? And, and then, and then just, that's what we charge them?
I think it oughta be per tract.
Yeah, they'd be different, ones that have less.
Okay.
More stuff.
Okay, that's.
Two cents times a thousand is two-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars.
Right, okay.
That's what I was trying to do, but.
That's what I was trying to do, but, you know.
Right.
We've spent.
I think you're the right idea. I mean, some counties might try to make a goldmine out of it, but Alan's right, they're, they're taxpayers and public, just like everybody else, and they have a right to.
Well, Rockford may want eight items, so that'd be eight cents, or, you know, whatever. I think we have to listen to the folks and see what it costs us to do.
Pam?
Okay.
Amy?
Yeah, it sounds.
I guess I'd ask Augie, is it implied, do you use this plat book?
Well, from time to time, we use it, and we have a lot of abstracters that come in, and they ask for a current plat book.
And you can use what they put out for that.
Well, it's always nice to have a current plat book.
Okay, on the budget, we've got.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's all right. Ninety-one point six-six percent of the year gone, or expended, we have expended about eighty-seven point one-nine percent of the year. We're gonna be projecting to take in about four-point-one million. And we hope that we only spend about three-point-nine, we'll see how that volumes up, but that's what we're looking at. Uh, I gave you all this, and you have that also, and you can look at the various departments and see where they're at. And, you know, we're coming down to the wire. We'll have a, a meeting of the finance committee later on this week, and of course, you all are invited.
Do you know when it's gonna be?
Uh, well, it'll probably be Thursday or Friday morning at this point, don't you think? Alan usually is the one that, we kinda look at his schedule and.
He's so busy.
Well, he has a.
I have Thursday, Thursday and Friday, I got Thursday, Friday morning.
Yeah, so it'll be Thursday or Friday morning, um, does that help you?
Can you do that now, or you don't have to?
Yeah, we can do it right now, if you want.
Just tell me what you want.
If it's Thursday morning, it's gonna have to be the nine o'clock, if it's Friday morning, it's gonna be eight o'clock. So that's, I have a, a previous.
Thursday'd be good for me. Is nine too?
Is nine too late?
Nine'd be just about right, you get, I get things going.
Okay, nine o'clock, and the purpose of the meeting will be to discuss the FY fifteen budget, the levy, and the agreement with nine one one.
Where's it gonna be?
It will be at the Kreckman Building, okay? Does that give you enough, Augie, to go on?
Sure does.
Okay, as far as the budget and levy, uh, we do have, how are, what are, what would you like? Uh, the board like, the finance committee do, do as far as the levy? Should we try to, we've got a certain part of it that, that has to do with the ambulance that we need to deal with. So, how do we, how do we go about resolving that? Where are we with communications with, with them, and, you know, if that's appropriate at this point to discuss?
I met with them, along with the state's attorney, and told them that we were considering lowering the levy. They were going to have a presentation for us this morning, they was gonna give you something, what, they didn't.
I called Nicole last Friday, and, uh, just to confirm what her plans were. And she said, I will email you some documents to give to the board, just so they would have it ahead of time in preparation for the October twentieth study session, that she is going to be here to make a presentation. Does that sound right, Ben?
Yes, but.
But I hadn't, hadn't seen, I checked my email, I didn't see anything from her.
I did.
I also, well, at that meeting, I, I had Augie call her and tell her that anything we get is subject to being public information.
And I did call her, she appreciated that fact, and, uh, was aware of it.
Okay, yeah, I just wanna make sure that she knew, whatever she gave us was public information.
The information she was, excuse me, going to give us, she was running by her attorney, who was supposed to get back to her, but they haven't yet.
When you had your meeting, they were there with the state's attorney?
They were there and their attorney, Rick Smith was there, and the state's attorney and me.
Okay.
And, of course, they said that, that they needed more, more money. And we pointed out that all we had to go on was the bids, because we can't ask them for, see their, how much money they made. We can't ask them, nor should we ask them that, but our basis is based, basis on, the decision is we got bids and people were willing to do it for less money. And she did point out some things that she said was not correct in their, their bids, and I'll check that out. Some things that might've cost more money, like, for instance, she, she said that, I think on one of the bids, they had thirty-five thousand dollars for a certain type of insurance. Do you have them take the bid thing? Anyway, and and she said that they cost them ninety-six thousand for that. Well, I guess that's a possibility, that, that their insurance is higher than, but they were going to give us proof of things that they thought that we needed to consider. So that's kinda what was left.
Are they giving a presentation then on the twentieth? Is that what the meeting is?
Right.
Yes, and they're, and they're gonna try to give us submission, some information ahead of that time?
Yes.
So that we can look at that, and then we'll, if we have questions ahead.
Yes, but they were gonna have the information today, and we don't have today, so, so I guess.
As soon as I get it, I'll deliver it to you.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, she called me last Thursday morning, I think, and been there about fifteen minutes. And I listened to her, and I understood where she's coming from, so, from my own information, I went and talked to one of the past board members about levy. And the intent of the levy, intent of the contract was for the twenty percent. And this was Janet Seller who used to do it, so he said the seven townships voted on it, they voted on the contract of the ambulance. The intent of the contract was the maximum levy.
We hope that wasn't it, because that means that's an illegal contract.
Well, I'm just saying, that, that's what he said, it's only from our, you know, only from us, nobody else.
Sure, sure.
So we just kinda wanna know what was going on after knowing.
And that's also what the state's attorney pointed out to them at the meeting. That if that, if that is how we interpret the contract, and he had the statutes, he had the, or that's good to the court. If that's what the contract is, it's an illegal contract, and we have no contract. But if you interpret the contract as whatever we levy, we have to give them all of it, then it's an illegal contract. So if it's a contract, if the contract is the way that the past chairman has pointed out was the intent of it, then it's not a legal contract, and we have no contract. It's all, if it's interpreted that way, if it's interpreted that we can levy whatever we want, and we have to give every bit of that to them, then it's a legal contract. But if it's interpreted.
So we have to levy the maximum, and it's illegal?
Illegal contract.
So who's gonna make that determination?
Well, we are, we're making a determination.
With the advice of the state's attorney?
Yes, with the advice of the state's attorney, we're making the interpretation that we don't have to levy the max. If it, if we do, then it's, if we do, then it's not a legal contract, and we can't do it anyway. Then we, then we'd have to rebid the thing, I would guess.
But, but we could, we levy dollars for the most part.
We can't, we could levy the max.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, I mean, and we could always.
We could determine that we could do that.
Exactly, and, and then, I guess the issue would be, it's like, if we didn't do that, then it would be, the onus would be on them to say, that's not a part of our contract. You have to levy the max, then it would come back to us, and our state's attorney would say, okay, we don't have a contract, let's start the game over again.
Mm-hmm, and that's what we explained to them.
Yeah, so I, I don't know.
I have a, another concern, Ben, as of the twentieth. Normally, we have pretty much, all of us agreed to by the, this week, okay? And as long as, you know, we're, we're gonna have to do more meetings in here after their presentation. If I could suggest to make them, and we might adjust our, our agenda for Friday, or Thursday. If they could somehow come up with any information or have a discussion with us, we'd be more than happy to discuss it with them on Thursday, okay?
Yes.
I mean, we do not have to wait unless there's someone.
That's a, that's a good idea.
I mean, now, if they need the time, right.
No, I don't think, I don't think they would, I think that would not be a problem for them.
If you could swear.
Then we would, we would hope that everybody came to the finance committee meeting, then.
You want all of you to?
I can do it, or all of you.
One of you to contact them and see if they can move that up till the ninth?
Well.
See, they didn't do it at the board meeting, because we didn't have time to put them on the agenda.
At a professional request, withhold this from the newspaper, they're on vacation this week. And she didn't want that widely known, and so.
Too late.
I, I told her, I said, that'll just stay between you and me, Nicole, but they want, and, and I don't know whether they're gonna get back. But she did say that they were traveling when I called them on Friday afternoon. And I assumed that it would be most of the week.
Now, do you wanna hold the finance till the first part of the next week? Then we're running into other trouble.
But I can call Nicole, ask her anything you want me to ask, they may be back, I don't know.
Yes, call, find out, call, find out, find out the near, the soonest that we can have that.
We'd have two meetings, Thursday and Friday.
Well.
Well, or how about, I mean, we could go like next Tuesday.
Right, well.
Next Monday is Columbus Day, historically, you don't meet on those days, but I mean.
That's fine. Well, let's go ahead with our, our, our Thursday meeting, okay?
Okay, but we've got.
You got a lot of stuff to cover.
We really didn't need a bunch more, but we need to, and then we can have another meeting.
We need to.
As we have to.
Yes.
And if they can, we pray that maybe for some reason that'll work out, and then you can add that to the agenda.
I took on Tuesday morning, Tuesday, Thursday.
I'm trying to remember if I forgot anything now. The airport meeting is next Monday. Next Monday evening.
It's always gonna be on Monday evening.
At this point.
Okay, looking over the agenda, I'll get to you, I'm gonna get, but looking over the agenda, item twelve, resolution to support Looking for Lincoln program. You wanna tell us something about that, is that your?
Best news is, there's no financial obligation to the county. It's a, a resolution that the state organization is asking us to request, just to indicate that you folks essentially lend your encouragement to the organization of, uh, adding Edgar County to the Looking for Lincoln network, uh, which is primarily the central part of the state. And basically, it's the old judicial district that Lincoln practiced in. We're the only county that, at this point, is not a part of that program, for whatever reason. When they originally, uh, established it five or six years ago, uh, they indicated that, uh, they reached out to the county, or to the city. Uh, nobody has any recollection that there was a contact made, but if there was, why, it didn't go anywhere. So that's why they're now renewing it. We have a fledgling organization established, and we'll see where it goes. Appreciate your support.
Thank you, anybody having questions? Augie?
We are voting now in our office. I don't have the numbers yet, but somewhere around forty, fifty people so far, fifty. We have a lot of absentee requests.
Why don't you send those out? The absentee requests?
They request, they phone in or write in, they ask for absentee ballot, and then we turn right around and send those out.
Soon as you.
Soon as we get them, yeah.
I had someone asking that the other day, and they said they put requests in, but hadn't heard anything from you.
Okay, uh, that's the way it's supposed to happen, is within a reasonable amount of time, we get, turn around and get them right back out. And, uh, and I know you, you've all heard of or seen the, uh, applications, uh, for registration that came in the mail. I don't know if you've seen those or not, it's put out by one of the, uh, I think it's one of the Republican state organizations. They've mailed out hundreds of thousands of them, um, not to be confused with the router, voter registration card, and it's a big trifle thing, and they pre-populated that with voters in our county who have, uh, who've already voted, and just remind them to go vote, and they can request an absentee ballot. And, of course, they used my name on their return, and I've had some phone calls. I did not send those out.
Collusion.
Yeah, and, uh, then there's, there's two brochures, that one from the runner campaign, and the other one from a Republican Federation, I don't know. Or Democrat, I don't even remember which party it is, to be honest with you. And it's just generic-looking, a request, uh, to get registered and then absentee, I did not send those out either, so. But we are, uh, taking requests, and, uh, tomorrow, uh, grace period voting and registration begins. It, it, again, we have, we have a crazy system in Illinois where we have absentee, and, uh, and we also do in-person absentee, and then we have grace period voting, where you can, the registration closes now. So nobody else can register a voter beginning tomorrow unless they come into the courthouse, we're the only ones that can do that. No, no, no.
You, you can actually do that, they, uh, are election.
And now, thank you, Ben, yeah, but then we also have early voting, which starts, you know, in a couple of weeks. And it's all a mess, so we just, there's a movement in the state to try to clear up a lot of that confusion. I just came back from a conference in Springfield, and I wanna hand out to you, I am not gonna discuss this, but I wanna hand out two pages of legislation, most of which, it was, it's all for clerks and recorders, but most of it is regarding this elections omnibus bill that passed, which is geared only for this coming election. And one of the highlights is, you can register to vote and vote all the way up in, to the close of polls on Election Day.
Which has to be done at your office.
But that has to be done at the county clerk's office.
Not like you're not busy that day, so you hand it to the.
You know, it used to be where they. Yeah, it used to be where they, that was cut off on a Thursday, and we had time to compile all of our information and get our records all put together, and then we'd have time to get those out to the polls. But now, it's going to create a lot of confusion. I don't want to take the time to go over that, but I would really appreciate if you guys would look that over, just so you can see the foolishness in some of this stuff. Now, would you like to go over the agenda for Wednesday?
Can I ask you just a regular question?
Oh, any.
Joe Q, can they go into the county clerk's office right now and vote?
Yes.
Okay.
See, it's.
I mean, forget all the rest of stuff.
Forget all the other stuff.
If I want to go in and vote today, like tomorrow, or like Saturday when we get done, I can go in and vote.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we're open for voting.
I've looked over the agenda, and we've pretty well covered everything but resolution appropriating funds for state's attorney's prosecutor, seven thousand dollars that we do over here.
You did it that quick from the other day?
Yeah.
Do you want to look over and see anything anybody has a question on, or anything?
I assume that's the same amount we always.
Yes.
Yes.
We went over the resolutions for, in the Groden Bridge meeting.
What's number fourteen?
Yeah. Number fourteen, that is Joseph Meyer, our tax agent. And occasionally, I would bring this before the board, where there might be one or two parcels. Now, there are twelve parcels that the county tax agent is selling, so we can get these parcels back on the tax rolls.
So, these people on the left are the people that are buying the parcel?
Yes. And, yes, that's right. And they did not give me, in, in the documents, the.
What parcel?
The address.
Yeah, what did that, but the nice thing about our new system right now?
Yeah.
With your survey.
G I S.
Supervisory assessment, you can go punch that in.
Exactly.
It's a.
It's on your computer, Carl.
Okay, some of us can go in and punch that in.
I guarantee it.
I bet you can, I know you can.
Yeah.
That's not going to get emails that way. Yeah, that's, that's right.
And you see there, at the top of the agenda, we're going to have Judge Garston to swear in Mr. Packard. You don't want to miss that.
Make sure you get in the right seat.
Yeah, right.
You're between Mr. Brenner and Mr. Housley.
I've slid up one time, but I'm on the seat.
You can sit in your wrong seat, but something I'll tell you.
That's all I am.
Or you better not get behind that. Anything else come before the meeting?
Just from my standpoint, thanks for going and talking to the ambulance crew, you and Mark, and after we head out of the meeting, I think that's, that's a good deal.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Foe, same sign, motion carried, we're adjourned.
Were you depressed?
Close fifteen budget.
Let's see, they have to talk it for the.
The back sheet on this one will be helpful for you.
You came up with.
Hand.
Turn the legislative.
Hand.
You've come up with twenty new things you have to do, or try to do, or make a change in your maintenance. I mean, where would you be, like your state organization, to lead you a little bit on what these are?
And that's all just for this election.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's crazy.
Now, what's going to happen is, they're going to say, "Hey, that worked out pretty good. Let's, we're going to keep the same-day registration and voting on Election Day." I think that's the state.
Yeah, if you mention me on the airport.
And no photo ID?
It changes.
Anybody just. And I got no photo ID. Now, that's not a big problem in any county. But.